Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, March 20th, 2014. Please rise as Reverend Shelton Rhodes of the Greater Zion Church of God in Christ will lead us in the invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Ken Secora, Director of Parks and Leisure Services.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, we have bound. Our Father God, we come to you once again. Lord, we thank you for another wonderful day that you've made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we just thank you for how you woke us up this morning, started us on our way. We thank you, Lord, for your wisdom being in this place on today, to our mayor, the city council, to all that are present. You said wisdom is the principal thing. Therefore, get wisdom, and with all our getting, to get understanding. We thank you for it, even now. Blessings we go forth in what we do on today for the betterment of our city. Bless these city fathers, and bless all that we do. We trust you for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If I could remind everybody, somebody probably saw this in the paper, but Mr. Secora is retiring after 16 years of service with the City of Temple, so if we could all give him a round of applause. Thank you, Ken, for everything. That's the opportunity for public comments. Citizens who desire to address the council on an ink matter may do so prior to this meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken by the city council. First up, Ms. Dorothy Goodall.
Can I speak from here, or you want me to go over there?
I would need to get somebody to hand you this mic, if that's all right. Thank you, sir.
My name is Dorothy Goodall. I reside at 1111 North 7th Street here in Temple. I just wanted to thank all of you sitting up there for what you have done in the past. I understand that we have some clarification on some of the problems that we have had, and I want you to know you are appreciated, and I appreciate what you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I have my mic back? Now, I just tweeted. Oh, Ms. Carol Owen, I might need to borrow you one again. I didn't realize that she was right there.
You're the official mic man.
Yeah, you might have. We're digitizing you there.
Thank you. My name is Carol Owen. I live at 1203 North 9th Street in Temple. I didn't know when I came down here that Mrs. Morales had resigned, but I still want to say the same thing. We live under the rule of law, and good works do not excuse criminal action. I support the mayor and our council in this difficult time.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Mr. Billy Routen. And Mr. Routen, would you mind going up to the -- thank you, I appreciate that.
My name is Billy Routen. I reside at 3008 West Avenue T in Temple, Texas. First, let me state, I reiterate what the woman said. I fully appreciate your service to the City of Temple, your undying devotion to what you do, the time and effort you put in. That includes Mrs. Morales, what she has done for the city. We appreciate her. We also appreciate her decision to remove herself from this issue. However, there's still questions that need to be asked, or answered, in this situation. Is Mrs. Morales still on the ballot for May? Will she be reelected and be right back on the council? Is the investigation by the city attorney completed or done on this issue? There are several things that need to be accomplished before this issue is over. I hope that these are all handled in the open, in front of your public. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Routen. Chris Coleman.
My name is Chris Coleman. I reside at 206 North 7th Street here in Temple. Citizens of Temple, we cannot lose sight of the big picture. The big picture is what's best for the City of Temple and its citizens. This is not about one district. It is about the city as a whole. I've heard that people think people are against Judy Morales because of her race. Her race is irrelevant because when it comes to the law, true justice is blind. I've heard people say that passing judgment will keep us out of heaven. This, again, is a biased, rhetoric-filled statement, because if I had been in their neighborhood and committed a crime, they would judge me and won't make charge. I've heard it said that she lied and committed these crimes in the name of justice for District Two. Vigilante justice does not fit for these crimes. I've heard those of us calling for justice being called bandwagon jumpers. This is simply insurance. We are calling for the recall of the council as a whole, as there have been things going on since before and after the Judy scandal. Things like council members gaining city contracts and kicking other contractors out when the economy is bad enough. Things like the support of a corrupt police force who is mistreated and assaulted the people rather than serving and protecting them. These are Washington-style politics, and we cannot allow that. It is drawing us away from the facts. We need to stick to the facts. The facts are that Judy Morales admitted and knowingly broke the law. We cannot have an untrusted representative who is pending a criminal trial holding a position of authority on the city council. The key problem is both reckless and irresponsible. Our country is in shambles because we have leaders in power that are corrupt. We need to take a stand for the city and for the country to say corruption will not be allowed. We need to send a clear message that no one has bent the law. Attempts to cover up crimes is an atrocity, and that dog won't hunt. Citizens, if you want to do what's best for the city as a whole, you need to see Judy Morales removed from office now and permanently for the coming future, and input someone who will do the job right and lawfully by the people of the City of Temple. District Two, if you feel you are left unrepresented, then you need to get involved with the city council and make your voice be heard, because sitting back and grunting about it but doing nothing to change it makes your words futile and effortless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Ms. Lydia Alanese.
My name is Lydia Alanese. I live at 620 South 6th Street in Temple, Texas. I am here to express my disappointment in your actions not to support Judy Morales in District Two, Representative. She was voted by the voters in District Two, so it is a mystery to me why you, who do not live in my district, can push her out. I was insulted by the comments that she -- by your comments that she did not have the best interest of the city, when Miss Morales, for many years, has always had the best interest of the people in her heart. Residents and voters in District Two feel that our rights as voters are being violated and are meaningless when people from other districts determine who will or will not represent us. I would like you sometimes to explain to us how this is just or fair. I am dismayed at the media coverage being so one-sided and covering stories without real facts. Its intentions appears to be mean-spirited and demeaning. I want to know now who will be assuming responsibilities for District Two? Who do we call when there is an issue in District Two? And who will be looking at the budget to assure that roads are kept in decent shape and our water and sewer lines are maintained or replaced? How will we know when you will be discussing the city budget? And how will we know that District Two is included in the budget? I have a written response -- I would like a written response to my questions within two weeks. I hope and pray, when you are underscripting, that you will be able to have as many supporters that Miss Morales has had supporting her. I also would like to look at the city charter review by the people from the community, not just the city council. City council or have the final say-so. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Paul.
I didn't have any. Mary Paul, 9016 Lower Ridge. And I really didn't prepare anything. I just have a question. Do you guys know where you're at on getting me my numbers? The registered voters per district? I've heard that because people are registering to vote every day, is that something that you plan to do when I turn in? Kind of change the number? I need a formula on how you're going to tabulate my numbers. I think that's only fair because I'm flying by the seat of my pants here with the numbers. I mean, the signatures keep coming. And to answer Ms. Alanese's question as who's going to represent her district, well, I still have a petition ongoing, and if they want to support your removal, just contact me. We can put our differences aside. I don't think anybody sitting up here deserves to sit up here. I don't know how much longer we have to continue this type of representation. And if you want to help, you want to sign, you know where I'm at on Saturday and Sunday, so I wholeheartedly intend to continue my petition to get you guys out of here. I mean, the community wants that. There's things that you do that you don't listen to the public. People don't want you taking city contracts. Why don't you just stop? I mean, instead, you spend hours and hours and days and days explaining to us why it's legal. That shouldn't matter whether it's legal or not. You've got people out there that think that it's a conflict of interest. So stop doing it. Stop putting money in your pocket. Or resign, or, you know, leave the city council and go do that as a full-time job. But I think it's a conflict of interest, so rally on, petition on. Yay.
I should bring a little parrot with me every time I come up, so they can say, "CJ Grisham, 4365 Airport Trail." I wanted to start with a scripture here, and because I know I'm supposed to address the city council, so I'm going to do that, but I've been hearing on the radio some stuff about how this whole issue is dividing the city. If the people are divided, it's divided between supporting crime and opposing crime. You either support misdeeds, or you don't support misdeeds. When you come up and you say that someone's done a great job for this community, that's great. But just because someone's done a great job, and we find out now after the fact, the only reason that Judy's not charged with other crimes is because she's gotten away with it for so long, and the statute of limitations is gone. This whole thing reminds me of, because, you know, I hear, since my name's being thrown out there, I'll throw out a name. I hear Sue Hamby talking about white males up here on the city council. As far as last time I checked, there's five petitions out there to get rid of one Hispanic female and four white males. So I don't see anything racist about that. But Proverbs 29, verse 2, says, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; when the wicked beareth rule, the people mourn." And right now, the people are mourning in the City of Temple because of numerous reasons. It's not just Judy Morales. We do have a problem with our police force. We've got good officers on our police force whose names are being drug through the mud because nothing's being done about the bad ones. Nothing's being done about the terrible police chief that we have and the assistant chief of police that are doing nothing but ruining the morale of the police department, which affects the people. So this isn't about a white versus Hispanic, District One versus District Two, male versus female. This is about supporting the rule of law versus supporting lawlessness. And if District Two is concerned that they don't have a representative, every single person in District Two, stand up and put your name on the ballot. Thank you. Rita Jo Guerra.
The city councilmen. My name is Rita Jo Guerra. I reside at 1910 South 19th Street in Temple, Texas. I'm here to really look at our charter and to ask you questions that I know you cannot answer me now. And our charter was put together in 1922. There's been some amendments to it since then, but to my understanding, the city council puts the charter together. We, the people of the City of Temple, would like to be part of that. We, the people who live here, who pay our taxes, who have our homes here, would like to be a part of that decision-making in the charter. And we need to have a group, I feel, in that, with the city council, representing the people of the community with that charter. And there are several things that I will not get into with the charter that needs to be addressed after many, many, many years. Then I also want to, I know it was said this morning when Judy Morales resigned, that we would not speak of this, of Judy in District Two today, but evidently we are, so I'll go ahead and speak what I have to say. We lost a great woman today. A great woman that served District Two. Besides serving District Two, she served District Three. I'm from District Three. I've never called her my city councilperson once. Why? Because I've always had Judy as a friend, a neighbor, I'm right on the line, and she's always been there for me. She's been there for me many, many years. She's been a mentor to me. She's guided me. She's led me. She's led me to you. She's led me to be part of Temple and find out city government, be involved in the government, find out what is going on in your community. And she's done that. And now, who do we go to as District Two? Who is going to represent us now? What number do we pick up and call? I had a number on speed dial. What number do us as citizens call now when we do have a problem? Because I represent a large part of District Two, different communities I sit, communities and plans I sit on. And those are issues that I'm deeply concerned in. And guess, we've all done wrong in one way or another. If we've done wrong, I can honestly say, the wrong that was done was done unintentionally to help another. And I know we've all done it. I can sit here and look at every one of us, and we've, none of us -- I'm speaking to the council, excuse me. And there may be a few perfect people here that I'm, but I just would like to know, what are we going to do with District Two? Who are we going to call? And I would like to know these numbers in a timely fashion, is what I'd like to see. And I would like to be able to serve my community as I had and I will continue to do in any capacity I can do.
Thank you, Ms. Carol.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am. San Janette Crossley.
My name is San Janette Crossley, and I live at 5102 Sturbridge Drive here in Temple, Texas. And I'm sorry to say, I was unaware that we weren't allowed to talk about Judy. I was told that since I got here, but obviously, that has changed. And so I only came up to say, again, we were somewhat disheartened by the decision that she had to make, because our concern now is what will continue, you know, to happen for District Two. I've been a resident of this city all my life, and most of my life was spent on the East Side, and we're actively involved, my husband and I, in efforts to make improvements there. And so our concern is that we have a system here that is in need of repair from our proclamation down, based on the feelings I'm hearing expressed, the remarks. So is that a bad thing? No. It just means we have an opportunity to raise the bar of excellence in the City of Temple, that we can get people to, so that we can eliminate some of the major concerns of people, that we're not open-minded, or that we don't have pure hearts, or what have you. Then we need to find the pieces that exist that would allow us to review our charter, correct it, so that, again, like I said earlier, the people that desire to serve can, without worrying about have they broke a law that they want to wear up. So we have an opportunity to raise the bar for the City of Temple, for everybody, for the whole city. So I encourage the council, let's find a way that we can get it done. Find a team, make a team, let's assess our problems from the head down to the toe, and let's get the specialists on the board. Let's fix it. Let's fix it without us having to feel like we have to stab and cut each other and demean and feel heartbroken and hateful, because we have enough of that prevalent on our international level and our national level. We've quoted scriptures. We have prayer before we come here. We quote the allegiance of the flag. Well, let's put it to action. Let's find all the parties that need to get involved, and let's fix the situation. We're quite capable of doing that. We have, I think, available to us the resources to do that. We can go find those resources, so that we can move on with business and take care of business the way we all desire. Everybody here, I think, wants to make a difference, make it better. Well, let's fix it, and we are capable of doing it. May God bless you to do that.
I'm going to pass. I was here to talk about Judy. Maybe I didn't know she resigned until I got up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Dr. Paxton Howard.
My name is Paxton Howard. I've lived in Temple for 43 years, at St. Madras, 3702 Deer Trail. I haven't had the radio on today, so I don't know what has happened with Judy, but I understand she must have resigned. I've been concerned about this. This whole thing has been an embarrassment to our community. All I know about it is, I know Judy. I served for 12 years with her on the Temple College Board. We enjoyed a wonderful relationship, and she did a great job. I didn't see any sense of racial or ethnic tension or disharmony in our service on the Temple College Board. All I know about this situation is what I've read in the paper. I don't know any of the rest of you personally. I know Danny, but I don't know the rest of you personally. I don't have an agenda. I didn't plan to come down here until about 4:30 this afternoon, when it occurred to me, there is one question that I haven't heard addressed yet. Now, Judy has resigned. That was what you wanted, okay? That's what several people wanted. What's going to happen on May 10th? Will she be reelected? Is there anything that has disqualified her from being reelected? Will you go after her again? Or will you welcome her back as a member of our community who's been elected by her district to represent her district? I don't know. Are you not allowed to answer questions tonight? That's just a question of law that I'm not familiar with.
I'll leave that up to --
Yeah, I'll be, I can give you a brief answer, and I'd be glad to meet with you and talk to you about it. Judy Morales --
Yes, speak up if you will.
Judy Morales is the --
She's the city attorney.
Judy Morales is the candidate-elect from that district, and on May 10th is election day, and four days after that, on Tuesday, the council will canvass the results of elections that have been canceled. And at that time, unless she declines the office between May 10th and May 14th, or resigns the office after that date, she would be the council member elected from that district.
Okay. That's the legal situation that you guys are going to find yourself in May 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th. That's not all bad. She's elected by her district. There are lots of councils that don't like everybody who else is on the council. You only have to see that in Dallas. But we don't want to be a community, either, that denies an individual a chance to run from their district. Now, that'll make headlines around the country. Temple City Council denies an individual an opportunity to be reelected from their own district. So you've got to face that. And I hope everybody, I hope this is not a racial thing. Judy's a wonderful person. She's done lots for the community.
Dr. Howard, if you wouldn't mind --
Time's up.
Thank you.
Hey, it's good. I'm Temple, Texas. My name is Raymond Hesbrook, and I reside at 4415 Brutus Lane. And I'm really more of like a complaint, but also I have a solution. And my complaint is, every time, I just moved here from Austin, Texas, and every time I'm leaving my house, right on Canyon Creek and Hartrix Bluff, I always see, because there's like really tall brush piles. And I'm just wanting a preventative measure, because someone's going to get T-boned really bad there one day, and there's going to be fatality. So that's my solution, and that is all.
I should have called on you first. I'm sorry about that.
Sorry. I'm really not good at public speaking, but my solution is, we need to cut that stuff down so that we can prevent a fatality in that area. So.
Thank you for that. That might be the most controversial thing tonight. Item three under reports, I will read this in. Receive the annual report regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission cases from fiscal year 2012 and 2013, to include Platts zoning, conditional use permits, planned development code amendment, and I-35 corridor appeal cases. This item has been deferred till our April the 3rd, 2014 council meeting, and no action is needed. Item four is under bond items, and it's item four, five, and six, and I'm going to read all of these, and then these will be taken in a single motion. Consider adopting, item four, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the defeasance of the city's limited tax note, Series 2011, and other related matters. Item five, which is a first reading and a final hearing with a public hearing, consideration and action with respect to the fifth supplemental ordinance to the master ordinance establishing the City of Temple, Texas Utility System Review Financing Program, related to the issuance of City of Temple, Texas Utility System Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2014. And item six, which is a first and final reading as well, and also has a public hearing, consideration and action with respect to an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Temple, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds, approving an official statement, a paying agent registrar agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and an escrow agreement establishing the procedures for selling and delivering one or more series of the bonds, and authorizing other matters relating to the bonds. And I'll turn this over to Ms. Bernard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. And is it okay to take all three?
Please.
Okay. The first item is a defeasance of a limited tax note. Defeasance is fancy word for paying it off, getting it off of your books. This item, these, or these bonds were issued to fund the remediation and repairs to the police station. They were dated November 1 of 2011, and when they were issued, the intent was to call or pay off the outstanding balance once the city recovered costs for repairs and remediations. The bonds are not callable and have maturities through 8/1 of 2018. Therefore, we will need to transfer funds to an escrow agent and account, and at that time, we will consider these bonds retired and no longer on the books of the city. The source of the funds for the escrow were proceeds from the settlement of $5,350,000, remaining bond proceeds of $204,000, and then fund balance of $720,000. And the fund balance is because at the beginning of the issuance of the bonds, we'd used those funds for betterments during the remediation of the police station, and also to purchase mobile data laptops. The next bond item is related to the fifth supplemental ordinance to utility system revenue bonds, and this is to allow, the first, in 2006, council authorized and created the master ordinance, and this ordinance was established for a program for issuing debt and securing that debt within, and to be paid for from water and sewer system revenues. The fifth supplement that we're asking for approval tonight is before you, establishes delegation authority to refinance utility system revenue bonds for future savings and interest cost. And what's important in this ordinance and the delegation authority is the parameters that are set in the ordinance, delegate authority to -- Delegate authority to the Director of Finance, the City Manager, or the Mayor. It includes parameters not to exceed a par amount of twenty-five million, and that includes several different bond issues that are being considered to be refinanced or refunded to save interest costs. The net, these bonds will not be considered for refunding if the net present value savings is less than three percent. The maximum maturity date not to exceed August one of 2030, and this delegation authority is for one year. The final ordinance is related to a delegation for refinancing G.O. bonds, and this again will allow the city to save money on future interest cost or borrowing cost, based on the current market. Parameters of that delegation, delegate authority to the Director of Finance, the City Manager, or Mayor. The par amount is not to exceed forty-four million, and again, that's several different G.O., and general obligation and certificate obligation issues. And those will not be considered if the net present value is less than three percent, and also, the maximum maturity date will not exceed August one of 2034, and again, this delegation ordinance is for one year. And that concludes my comments and presentation on the bond items. If I can't answer your questions, I can also get, Jonathan can help with questions, or our bond counselor, if they can help.
Basically, this just gives us the opportunity to save money if that opportunity comes up.
Correct. And in current market conditions, there are opportunities to refinance our existing bonds.
Okay, great. Thank you. And items five and six of that are scheduled for a public hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
On either item.
On either item.
My name's John Coleman, two oh-six North Seventh, here in Temple. I just need to try to ask questions, so I can kind of better understand the cost of bonds, and when you're retiring bonds. If bonds are not callable, does that mean you cannot pay them off early? Is that my understanding about that?
Correct. The, on the first, the limited tax notes means that they cannot be paid off early. The holder of the bonds have the right to hold those till they mature.
If the, if the city has the money to be able to pay off those bonds early, is it wise to have a non-callable bond to, for an extended amount of time, if it could possibly be paid off earlier and save more money?
When those bonds were issued, that was all taken into consideration, and at the time of issuance, the, whether to issue callable, put a call date on the bonds, or not to have call dates, it was more advantageous to not have the call date. And what we're doing with the defeasance, we set the money aside in an escrow account, and as the bonds become, as they mature, and there's four maturities out through 2018, then that money will be used to pay off those bonds. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but I also worry about the total bond indebtedness that the City of Temple has, you know, for the futures, and the futures, and futures, and that we seem to be compounding debt constantly and putting more debt on the citizens.
That's why we're trying to save some of this money here, if we have the opportunity to.
Yeah, yeah, I can understand saving money. I don't, and I understand the bondholders wanting to hold it for such a amount of time that they can try to make a decent amount of money to what they consider to be, but to me, on some end, I think, you know, there's bound to be better ways to look at to try to save money, you know, instead of having it out there for so many more years than what it's actually needed. You know, maybe a study needs to be done to have shorter bond periods, where maybe even more money could be solved, if, you know, if a study could be involved and looked at that sort of thing.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
One final comment on the limited tax notes. They had a maximum maturity of seven years also.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading of, or items four, five, and six, and we can take these all in one motion.
I want to make a motion to approve items four, five, and six related to bonds.
Motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Next up is the consent agenda. All items listed under this section, the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council, and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, then the item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and will be considered separately. Council, this item, this is item seven A through seven X. Are there any items that you wish to remove for separate consideration or discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, item seven A through seven X.
Motion to approve item seven A through seven X on the consent agenda.
In a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Next item, item eight, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance abandoning a 1.257 acre portion of South Twenty-third Street, right-of-way extending southward from the Travis Science Academy to its intersection with South Twenty-Fifth Street, situated in the E. Pennington survey, abstract six fifty-eight. Bell County, Texas, being a portion of public roadway known as South Twenty-third Street, is conveyed to the City of Temple in volume seven thirty-one, page four seven nine, deed records of Bell County, Texas. Ms. Larrly.
Hello, Mayor and council members. The section of South Thirty-first, I mean, South Twenty-third Street that the Temple Independent School District wants to have abandoned is this portion on the aerial that is in red. Basically, it's on the property of the Travis Science Academy campus. It bisects the property, and it, they're wanting to take it from this point on to where it intersects South Twenty-Fifth Street. And this is just a survey of the portion that they want to abandon, which is in this area right here. And the reason that the Temple Independent School District wants to request this partial abandonment is because the Ralph Wilson Youth Club wants to acquire this property from the school district to build a new Ralph Wilson Youth Club Center. And so, we contacted all utility providers, and there are no utilities in the subject right-of-way, and there are no objections from the utility providers with this request. So, if approved, this abandoned portion of South Twenty-third Street would be exchanged for two new tracts of right-of-way to be dedicated by a final plat of W., I mean, R-W-Y-C addition. So, staff recommends approval of this request, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions?
Ms. Larr, go back to the map just a second. At the, this is kind of the north end where the road goes into the neighborhood. Will there be a, any kind of a cul-de-sac or anything? I mean, there's neighbors up and down. I'm assuming that would tie in maybe to Ralph Wilson's plan somehow?
We are actually looking at that through the DRC process with the plat, and the Fire Marshal, and several other entities within that DRC process are looking at the different routes. So, that's something that we're still looking at with the plat.
And I was just going to offer, and there might be, looking to see if I see Public Works representative here.
That's perfect timing.
Perfect timing for Nicole. Might let her address also another project that is related to this area, which is one we're calling the Twenty-third Street Connector, and very much a priority for us, and we're moving forward on that, and I think that will also address the concerns that the councilman has just voiced, but I'll let Nicole address those more specifically.
Yes, we are in the process right now of designing the extension of South Twenty-third Street to tie into South Twenty-Fifth Street in conjunction with the work that's being done at that site by Ralph Wilson, T-I-S-D. So, that work is under design, and we expect that it will bid within the next couple of months, and that will provide that connection through that site.
Great. Thank you, and again, perfect timing. Anything, both councilmen?
Is there any reason why we should wait to approve that until we see the final plans of all involved?
I think that we have to, I think that going forward, I think they have to have this to be able to get the final plan.
And to pass it so they can-
Right, and I think that we would see the final plat if it were to come forward.
Yeah, and I would, I would offer that the abandonment is consistent with the discussions and the plans that both T-I-S-D, Ralph Wilson Youth Club, and the city are pursuing at the moment. So, I think it's all consistent with it.
Counsel. This time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Rudy Delguera, nineteen ten, South Nineteenth Street, Temple, Texas, seven six five oh four. I live at the, between Avenue R and Avenue T. At this time, it's a two-way, and with the Ralph Wilson plans on being built, how are they going to divert the traffic? And will they put a dead end on Cap, the Nineteenth Street? I'm concerned on the traffic and the youngsters on that block. I don't get an answer.
No, no, you know, you can have an answer. I think that we'll, I think after we see the plat of what they're doing, and if we need to take a look at traffic patterns, we can certainly do that at that time, to make sure that, I mean, one of the reasons we're doing this is to, is to ensure that the, the students and youngsters that might be out are taken care of, and can get in and out of school and the youth club safely, so.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? There being no further comments, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item nine, consider adopting a resolution authorizing an appeal of standards in section six point seven point five J of the Unified Development Code related to the I-35 corridor overlay zoning district for signs located on lots one through four, Block One Gateway Center, forty-five oh-one, South General Bruce Drive. Mr. Chandler.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to orient you to the site, first of all, up here, you can see the Gateway Center that was referenced, and the proposed Ashley Furniture, which this appeal is for, adjacent to the Gold's Gem, as part of the Gateway Center. And you may remember that in 2013, an appeal was approved by council for the cinema signage and the center landscaping, and thus, this project has only triggered an appeal related to the signage standards. And there are three specific provisions in the standards that are being appealed. One is the number of wall signs, which is allowed one per public facade according to section six point seven in the UDC Unified Development Code, a max of two. They're requesting four signs. Secondly, it's a maximum of three hundred square feet per sign face, and they're requesting an increase to four hundred and eighty-nine square feet per sign. And then, thirdly, it's for lighting, including for signage and excluding illumination of entryways and other security lighting that must be turned off within an hour after closing. They're essentially requesting the ability to keep two of those sign faces lit, two that are facing away from neighborhoods, and I'll show you an exhibit in a second. And these would be externally illuminated. Here's an exhibit of a site plan provided by the applicant. You can see that's rotated about almost ninety degrees. Here's I-35. Here is Gilmeister at the top, but essentially, this shows the view corridors for the proposed signage from the interstate and from Dodge and Loop. Here's an aerial, once again, this is the Gateway Center, and here's the approximate location of the sign, which is at, the four signs would be clad, cladding a Ashley Furniture tower, which we'll show you in a second, but it's their standard kind of architectural feature. And behind the signage, the nearest residential neighbor is about five hundred feet, and that's here to the east. To the south, the nearest residential neighbor would be about eleven hundred feet away. And here are elevations of the proposed building, but really, we're just looking at the signage in terms of the request before you today, and so, you can see the tower element that I referred to. This is their standard architectural feature, and the signage attached to all four sides, by definition, are considered signs. It's about fifty-five feet tall. And here are some perspective elevations, so you can see what that looks like. This is facing southwest. This is what you would see from Gilmeister at the top, and then, at the bottom is a view from I-35. Staff recommendation, his approval as submitted, considering that the signs on the neighborhood facing south and east elevations would not be eliminated after closing. And P&amp;Z recommended approval as submitted as well at their March third meeting. Be happy to entertain any questions that you might have, and the architect and applicant, David Besant, is here as well, if you have any technical questions. He's here on behalf of Ashley Furniture.
And this is just the standard Ashley Furniture sign, I think, as you mentioned?
That's correct.
Counsel, do we need to hear from the applicant or we? This does not require a public hearing, counsel, I'll consider a motion for this item.
Just ask a question, will this approval of the appeal apply to the sign forever, as attached to this building? Or, for instance, if Ashley Furniture moves, or somebody else occupies, will that sign still be authorized with another?
It would apply to Ashley Furniture, but a new tenant would be subject to the same review and the existing standards, and any deviation from those standards would have to come back to you all.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Consider a motion on item nine.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Under Board Appointments, item ten, consider adopting a resolution appointing one member to the Temple Economic Development Corporation to fill an unexpired term through September first, 2015. And we had a resignation on the board, and we had a application from Dr. Andre Ivats Ivatnitz, and if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to fulfill that unexpired term through September first of 2015.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
There's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.